So good late afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining this session, a cyber session on the 15th Shangri-La Dialogue. We're going to be looking into common security interests in the cyber domain. My name is Anakin Dikringas. I'm Senior Fellow for Future Conflict and Cybersecurity at the IIS. I will be chairing this session. With me today on the panel, you will find Mr. David Ko, who is Chief Executive of the Cybersecurity Agency and Deputy Secretary on Technology of Ministry of Defence in Singapore; Mrs. Shantosh Shah, who is Joint Secretary, Policy Planning and Cyber at Ministry of External Affairs in India; Ms. Ching Yee, Deputy Director General, Bureau of Cybersecurity, Cyberspace Administration of China; and Mr. Sean Kanook, who is just recently former National Intelligence Officer for Cyber Issues at the Office of the Director of National Intelligence in the US. How we're going to proceed with this session is I will open and give floor to each panelist for about five minutes of opening remarks, after which we're going to go into Q and A. And those of you again who want to participate in the Q and A, please note that the microphones are available around the table. Now, to frame this session, while cyber is definitely not a South China Sea, then ICTs, Internet Information and Communication Technologies, politically labelled as cyber, are one of the new technologies that is transforming how we function and how we fight. Cyber domains remain a land of crouching tigers and hidden dragons, while we learn and only start to normalise ICTs in our understanding of military capabilities, national security and development. But ICTs are going to be normal. Smart cities, nation building and contemporary conflict all have a common aspect or element of cyber in them. And freedom of information, I trust, is the new freedom of the seas. I have asked the panel to offer their opening comments on the role of cyber in high defence politics, on opportunities and challenges of regional cyber security and defence cooperation, how to reconcile the inevitably different national priorities and capabilities in defining and pursuing common security interests, as well as what's the new normal when it comes to cyber conflict. And we will proceed in the order of the agenda, so I offer the floor first to Mr. David Ko. Thank you.
Okay. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. My fellow panelists and I will share our views on cybersecurity. And I'm sure that we'll all agree that there are some common security interests. Of course, we may not always agree on what these interests are or how we can achieve win-win solution. Well, let me give you an example. I have two hats that I wear. I'm the Chief Executive of the Cybersecurity Agency in Singapore in the Prime Minister's Office. And in my spare time, I'm also the Deputy Permanent Secretary for Technology in the Ministry of Defence. I get to see both the civilian and the military sides of cyber in Singapore. And these two sides do not always agree, even in a small country like Singapore. So I find myself in the unusual position of disagreeing with myself on occasion, when my two official capacities disagree with each other. Thankfully, I'm generally on good speaking terms with myself, and these disagreements can normally be resolved. At the international level, given that we all come from different countries and are at different stages of economic development, different levels of internet connectivity and have different views and cultures, then obviously, different views on how this area of cybersecurity can be best managed are to be expected. Nevertheless, even if we do not agree on everything, there is obviously an urgent need to come together to establish platforms for discussion, to agree on the rules of the road, so to speak, and set some common goals that we can all work towards. This is because of the clear and present threats that we all face in the cyber domain. In the next few minutes, I'll briefly lay out Singapore's perspectives in this area and how this relates to the global situation. And I'll conclude by sharing some possibilities that we can explore together so as to build a more open and secure cyber domain for everyone. Singapore is an open and globalised economy. Last year, our total trade was more than two times our gross domestic product. We have benefited tremendously from the rise of the internet. It has fundamentally changed the way that we communicate and conduct business. We have a well-developed infocomm infrastructure that powers much of our physical as well as digital economy. Many Singaporeans are also digital natives, and we have one of the highest internet penetration rates in the world, at 82%. Our mobile phone penetration rate is an astonishing 150%, which means that many people, including myself, have more than one mobile device. However, such pervasive interconnectivity also poses significant threats to our computer systems and our critical information infrastructure, CIIs. Across the Southeast Asia region, FireEye reported that 29% of their customers were targeted with advanced cyber threats in the first half of 2015 alone. As we become more connected and more interconnected, our dependence on infocomm technologies increase and the potential risks of disruption increase correspondingly. We cannot count on just luck to protect Singapore against these attacks. When a cyber attack occurs in Singapore, the impact will not be only felt locally or within Singapore, but we think globally as well. Singapore's historical role was to be a transit point, a hub for the world. Today, Singapore is a financial hub, a shipping hub, as well as an aviation hub. A successful attack on us could affect global payment systems or commercial aviation traffic and air traffic control systems and disproportionate effects on our trade and banking systems as well, on these similar CIIs in other countries or within the region. This is because we are now all linked through what we will call supranational critical information infrastructure. These are the networks that transcend national borders and link together critical systems such as financial systems, international aviation and telecommunications. Against this backdrop, no country can achieve cybersecurity on its own. We need to recognise the urgency of the issue and start working together to take action based on our common security interests. As our cyber interdependence increases, so must our ability to protect our critical infrastructure and these supranational critical infrastructures. How can we protect ourselves? Well, I would like to offer three proposals. First, we must establish platforms for discussion so that we can build trust, facilitate cooperation and reduce the chance of miscalculation between countries. Here, I unabashedly promote the inaugural Singapore International Cyber Week, which we will be organising from the 10th to the 12th of October this year in Singapore. Aside from marking the 25th anniversary of the governmentware exhibition and conference, the event will incorporate the ASEAN Ministerial Conference on Cybersecurity as well as an ASEAN Cybercrime Prosecutors Roundtable Meeting to facilitate discussions on regional as well as global cybersecurity issues. My own Prime Minister, the Prime Minister of Singapore, will deliver the keynote address, so please attend. Secondly, we should aim for fair and inclusive rules of the road, such as agreeing on how best to manage or govern the internet that is used by everyone in this world. It's a global commons. Singapore also advocates a cyberspace where behaviour is governed by social responsibility and consensus building so that cybersecurity can be an enabler of smart technologies that improve the lives and provides economic opportunities for all of us. These are views which are common in ASEAN. Finally, we must set aside common goals to work towards, such as combating cybercrime. In this area, Singapore plays a facilitating role as the voluntary lead shepherd under the auspices of the ASEAN Ministerial Meeting on transnational crime. And on the global front, Singapore hosts the Interpol Global Complex for Innovation, which supports international cybercrime fighting operations. And we hope that more countries can join us in fighting this growing trend. There are many initiatives beyond what I have mentioned, but if I try to give a comprehensive list, we'll be here till dinner. Singapore recognises that we can play a useful role in the cyber domain by fostering discussions on our common security interests. And we hope that all countries can join us together in our International Cyber Week in October so that together we can begin the conversation to build an open and secure cyber domain. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ko, for this call for maybe an interdependent security cooperation in this field. With this, the floor is yours, Mr. Shah.
Thank you. As I mentioned to my co-panelists that I'm the only non-expert on this panel, I'm more a policy planner and I also handle global cyber issues in the Ministry of External Affairs. Let me try to present more of a perspective from the point of view of how we are looking at these issues and how internationally we are building cooperative elements. It would be an obvious thing to say that the potential threat, the existing threats in the cyberspace amongst the most serious and complex challenges facing the 21st century. So how do we address this? And as I mentioned, let us... There are more questions in this case than there are answers to provide. And be that as may, I would try and address this from the perspective of how my government or how we in India are looking at this issue. First of all, even as we are putting a lot of emphasis in expanding the digital domain through programmes like Digital India, we... There is a growing awareness in India that international cooperation is very, very important for securing the cyberspace as it grows more over a period of time and becomes more preponderant and we become increasingly dependent on it. This is naturally an imperative, given that India has become the second largest internet user base in the world. The potential for expansion is exponential. We hope to add another billion in India alone in the next five to 10 years. We are therefore working with a number of countries in developing areas of cooperation. Let me enumerate some of them. First, cooperation in cybersecurity capacity building. We plan to create a pool of 500,000 cybersecurity professionals in India in the next five years to serve as a bulwark for global cybersecurity efforts. Second, sharing cybersecurity best practices. Sharing information on malicious threats, attacks and activities through a network of certs around the world. And we are signing a number of agreements in that regard. Focusing on R and D and cybersecurity product development in close cooperation with partner countries. Incidentally, this is the focus of the upcoming framework agreement that we will have with the United States. Developing cooperation on mitigating threats to ICT infrastructure. We are also involved in building frameworks of close cooperation between law enforcement agencies and institutions, including finding better ways to deal with challenges such as accessing and sharing electronic evidence located beyond a territory to address cybercrime issues. This has a particular resonance in India because our experience in this regard at present hasn't been the greatest. And there is an international recognition that the MLAT arrangements that cater to this are clearly inadequate. And there is a requirement for tweaking it and using innovative ways to create a system that can provide an effective response to this problem. At the broader international level, we favour promoting a culture of restraint through building norms of responsible state behaviour and CBMs. This is important as only a culture of restraint can help deal with proliferation of cyber threats that we are seeing. While doing all this, we are cognisant that bilateral and international frameworks that build basis for cooperation are extremely underdeveloped and inadequate to meet the challenges we confront. The main reason for this is the trust deficit among different countries and different geographies which inhibit genuine cooperation between countries around the world. We are therefore focused on finding solutions to this problem of trust and have upscaled our participation in processes like ICANN, IGF, the UNGG, to which I have been nominated as an expert. We are also promoting cooperation within ARF, SAC and BRICS and hope to do so also in the Shanghai Cooperation Agreement once we obtain its membership formally. We advocate more representative participation of developing countries in cyber governance structures globally and would like to see greater transparency and accountability of these structures to the broader global community. This will be an important CBM and contribute to addressing the issue of trust deficit that has hobbled cooperation internationally. Let me briefly mention the approach we follow in the domestic domain. In India, we have taken a holistic approach to cybersecurity. Even as we support the multi-stakeholder model of internet governance, we believe in a multi-layered approach and would like a clear delineation of the role of different stakeholders. This has been an area where international discussions have been one of avoidance. We think that greater clarity at the global level on respective role of stakeholders, especially of the state, can help strengthen cybersecurity efforts around the world. Further, in India, we are clear that when it comes to national security issues in the cyber domain, the role of the state is a paramount one. In playing this role, the state must however work closely with other stakeholders, especially the private sector. For this purpose, a new position of National Cybersecurity Coordinator has been created to implement the cybersecurity policy of 2013 and his express function is to coordinate between different actors and stakeholders in India. Broadly speaking, we have created two different groups within the government to ensure this. One is to evolve a whole-of-government approach, a process that is headed by the National Cybersecurity Advisor. And a second one, which is headed at the most senior level, where we interact with the industry, the private sector, the civil societies, representatives, to develop a broader multi-stakeholder approach to our issues related to cybersecurity. Overall, we recognise the value of international cooperation to secure the interest of an open, secure and interoperable internet. We seek cooperation from other countries to build our own capacities, which we believe would enable us to make greater contribution to global cybersecurity efforts. So that, in essence, is my opening remark. Thank you.
Thank you for, what I would say, outlining even more clearly the civil-military nature of both opportunities and threats that ICTs entail. With this, I will give it to Ms. Ching.
I'm from China, Cyber Space Administration. I'm very happy to be gathering in Singapore with you after development of internet for 20 years. China in leveraging internet development to better people's lives and to develop the economy, we have achieved a great achievement. Especially since 18th Congress, China has implemented the strategy of strengthening the countries through internet and the national big data strategy and to promote the development of internet. This has become a leading force for China. At the present, China has 7 million, 700 million netizens and we have 4.23 million websites. And cn dot national top domain name is number one in China and in the top global internet companies, China has four. And each year, our transaction on internet exceeds 3 billion RMB. And we're also facing a lot of security problems. Virus charging is spreading in the internet. Fraud hacking, IP violation is all existing. And some hackings are stealing users' information and to harm national and personal welfare. Some criminals will try to organise terrorist activities and to threaten national and personal security. Internet is inter-developed world. You have me, I have you in it. China is facing this security issue, which is not avoidable for other countries either. And we think we have to really strengthen the four areas and so that we can keep the security of internet. First is to secure netizens' rights. And we have to secure that development is two-body and two-wings. And in the worldwide, and all these violations of IP and personal privacy has become a social disaster. And facing all these threats, we have to work together and to crack down all these attacks and to secure the rights of our people and to maintain the cyber peace. Secondly, we have to respect the cyber sovereignty. And this is the basis. President Xi Jinping in the Second International Cyber Conference raised four principles and also five proposals of cyberspace common body.
Cyber space is the common space of activities for mankind. The future of cyber space should be in the hands of all countries. Countries should step up communications, broaden consensus and deepen cooperation to jointly build a community of shared future in cyber space. Thirdly, to encourage dialogues and interchanges to come up with cyber space regulations commonly accepted. The nature of internet is about sharing information. It's about communication, it's about openness, sharing. Internet cybersecurity is about openness, it's not of a closed system. Only when there is an open environment, then the countries among themselves will be able to cooperate, will be able to interact, will be able to innovate the technology. And when we are able to achieve that, the level of cybersecurity will be enhanced. Countries should work together and stop the abuse of information technology. Countries should also work together based on the principle of mutual trust and mutual respect and to build an open, peaceful, cooperative cyber space. Fourthly, it's about countries sharing the responsibilities to help the developing countries and the people to enjoy the benefits of internet currently. Developing countries are home to 80% of the world population. Now, two-thirds of these people in the developing countries do not have the access to internet. We must be able to help them to have access to the internet and help them break free from poverty. China is willing to work together with the international community to increase our financial and technological support for these developing countries and to further build up the infrastructure of IT so that people in the developing countries are able to afford and to have access to the internet service. And more people in the countries in the developing countries will be able to enjoy the benefits of internet. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing with us some immediate national security concerns and cooperation priorities seen from Chinese perspective. And with that, Sean, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here and I'd like to thank IIS for the invitation and our Singaporean host country. As indicated earlier, for the last five years, I led cyber threat analysis for the US intelligence community. However, I have left government, so I just want to underscore that my comments here today will be in my personal capacity. My comments will also differ a little bit from the other panelists in that my professional approach to this is in threat analysis and in the security dilemma rather than in the policy proposal process. So I'd like to address it from that perspective of describing what we've seen happening in cyberspace rather than necessarily the normative policy side of how to get to where you want to be. And that'll be an interesting part of the rest of the discussion we share together. This year, our Director of National Intelligence testified in his Worldwide Threat Assessment to our Congress that many actors remain undeterred from conducting reconnaissance, espionage and even attacks in cyberspace because of the relatively low costs of entry, the perceived payoff and the lack of significant consequences. I really can't think of a more succinct, accurate and realistic description of the cybersecurity dilemma we all face globally and especially as well here in the Asia-Pacific region. I don't think we need to make the case any longer about cybersecurity as a priority. In fact, it's been the first topic that our Director of National Intelligence has addressed in that threat briefing for the last four years. And both Africa and counter-terrorism would come earlier if it had been alphabetical. I offer two reasons for that prioritisation. First, cyber and ICT, information and communication technologies are a part of every security issue that's going to be discussed and of concern to the people at this summit. Whether it's how extremists communicate, fundraise and proselytise or recruit new adherents, whether it's how conventional military armaments are employed, whether it's how countries seek to pursue political influence domestically and abroad or how companies economically compete, these are all dependent on ICTs and cybersecurity is paramount to pursuing all of them. Cyber concerns and cyber attacks are also an increasing threat in their own right. Looking back in recent years, we've seen attacks on Saudi Aramco, Sony Pictures and even more recently, the Ukrainian power grid. Notably, these are all private institutions that were targeted. That should bring pause to us all. Because in this growing geopolitical conflict, where non-lethal and potentially temporary or reversible means of exerting coercive influence are becoming more appealing, particularly because there have not been significant consequences to date for those who have chosen to use them. Once again, our Director of National Intelligence in 2015 talked about low and moderate level attacks as being even more appealing and problematic than a hypothetical cyber Armageddon. Many nations and non-state actors seek to intervene in each other's affairs and coerce behaviour below the threshold of international armed conflict. Much discussion has gone into what constitutes an armed attack under international law. What's even more interesting to a strategic analyst is how do you deal with the issues geopolitically when they are intentionally designed to operate below the threshold where certain UN Charter principles, Article 2.4 and Article 51, would take effect. Turning to one of Anakin's other questions about where is the common interest and what does cooperation look like, I will offer two policy proposal thoughts. First would be a genuine commitment to international law enforcement assistance, whether under mutual legal assistance treaties or other bilateral and multilateral fora, whether it's Interpol or others. But a real sincere effort to do trans-border criminal investigations and provide assistance along the lines of how well many nations cooperate on child pornography online, but to extend that to other areas of cyber concern. Second would be to build a security architecture that's based on four key principles that would actually make it realistic and practical. It would have to be transparent, meaning the rules would have to be publicly stated and known to everyone. Secondly, it would need to have universal applicability. That doesn't mean it would need to be symmetric. I offer the nuclear model of the Nonproliferation Treaty, where some countries were identified as haves and others were identified as have-nots of certain capabilities. But every country knew which category they fell into and they knew what other expectations they could put on every other country under the universality of those rules. A third factor would be enforceability. And this is probably where we lack internationally the ability right now to enforce any of the norms put forward in the UN Group of Governmental Experts. In fact, I would offer that many of those norms that are being proposed in many of the international bodies are also being breached, sometimes by organisations and countries involved in some of those very discussions. And last, we need to seek a stable And last, we need to seek a stable equilibrium, some system that would incentivize the participants to want to support that structure and be a part of it rather than having viewing opportunities for asymmetric advantage by defecting from such a security architecture. One of the other questions we were asked in preparation was what do military capabilities look like in cyberspace and what are the appropriate responses to their development and use? I would offer that the dual-use nature of ICTs makes it nearly impossible to identify or define cyber weapons. Instead, I think you need to turn to the effects to which they are purposed. That actually answers the second question then, because if you are basing it on an effects-based doctrine, then your answers are you would be entitled under international law and UN Charter provisions to respond however you would to other actions that would yield similar effects. So my legal analysis would not actually even involve the word cyber. It would involve effects of actions perpetrated on a victim and then standing principles of international law could be applied. An interesting observation we've made is the normative discussions to date that have been successful seem to focus on limiting civilian targets in peacetime, certain things being identified as impermissible targets of cyber activity, whether it's national computer emergency response teams or other critical infrastructures. Yet we have never heard, to my knowledge, any country voluntarily declare that it wanted to forego any offensive cyber capabilities. We've seen countries do that, Brazil, South Africa, in the nuclear model. We have not yet seen that in the cyber model. So that leaves an analyst once again thinking that successful future discussions probably lie more in what would be akin to Geneva Law rather than Hague Law, protecting civilians and civilians' infrastructures rather than looking to prohibit the proliferation of capabilities or the use of those capabilities under any circumstances, particularly because it would be technically so difficult to limit such proliferation. I'll leave you with three very quick thoughts about how I think this region and any region can pursue the common interest of interoperability in cyberspace that will yield those economic and social benefits you all seek. First, I think you need to think globally, not nationally and not even internationally. The value of economics lies in free flow of information and products, limiting the transaction cost to that. That's what I mean by thinking globally. Secondly, focus on information, not cyber. What's important is what these critical ICT structures carry, the value of that information to industry and governments. If you read the Shanghai Cooperation Organization documents and treaties, they take that sort of a focus and it's actually interestingly a focus that the United States took back in the 1990s. Lastly, I encourage you all to think about risk rather than security. Perfect information security is nigh impossible. Any armor infantry or artillery officers in the room know that you would not expect a military engagement where you would not expect to lose any of your units. Instead, you would plan on resiliency and reconstituting to pursue your mission. That's the way you need to think about cyber because we are all living in a world of continuous bombardment of malware and other endeavors to degrade capabilities. Collectively, you can pursue transnational law enforcement and collectively you can pursue security in your region by thinking globally about information, risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for anchoring, I guess, why cyber is a common security concern. What are some of the priorities and options for regional cooperation? Thanks you also for tabling clearly the prospect and the concern of low intensity conflict alongside with the challenges we already have around use of force and armed attack in cyberspace. With this, I would open the floor to comments and questions. As this session, also your comments and questions will be on the record. Please, those of you who want to ask a question or comment, give me a sign by clicking your name tag. And then please identify yourself briefly before asking your question. And then if you have a specific panelist you want to ask a question, that please point it out as well. Edward Roscoe maybe first, thank you.
Thank you very much for excellent presentations. It's very interesting to see the different visions and different strategies dictating cybersecurity. My name is Michael Roscoe. I am Assistant Professor at the S. Rajaradhana School and I teach a class of information and cyber conflicts. I have a couple of questions for David. Listen, I had a group of Singaporean students. We discussed sort of Singaporean cyber strategy, the evolution of it. And one of my homeworks that I give them is to rewrite or possibly propose a Singaporean cyber strategy. And one of the points was to add cyber defense as a pillar of Singapore's total defense. And I was wondering whether this is something you are discussing or whether this is something that you would be, you know, it's on a table. And my second question is also for David. China's idea of cyber sovereignty, the different conception of virtual sovereignty and physical territory, the convergence between physical and virtual sovereignty. How does Singapore perceive the concept of cyber sovereignty or perhaps ASEAN as a whole? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a couple of other questions, so please Mr. P.
Thank you. Sorry, I stole my nameplate. Carl Bilt from Sweden, but I'm also, as a matter of fact, heading an independent global commission on internet issues that's going to report in a couple of weeks. Some questions primarily on China, which I think is interesting to listen to the presentation. And primarily, if you could perhaps be somewhat more explicit what you mean by, which was alluded to previously, the principle of internet sovereignty. Because internet by its definition tends to be very borderless. And if we look at the future of the global economy, it's going to be driven by the digital value chains, by the freest possible flow of data and information, information of different sorts. And that's going to be key to the economic development, including the economic development of China, which is now turning outwards with e-commerce, with investments and other things. Then the risk, of course, with the internet sovereignty language is that it takes us back in time and invites the suspicion that it's a question of too many restrictions and too many walls. And that will be to the detriment, of course, of the country itself that imposes it, but also to the detriment of the development of the global economy. China, the Chinese political and economic debate at the moment, one of the sort of guiding or most popular concepts is the one belt, one road. Say that the world needs one infrastructure, one belt and one road. I would argue that the world needs one net, including China. And the question is whether the concept of internet sovereignty as is being formulated, whether or not the implementation of that would risk splitting the one net into several nets to the detriment of the economic development and security also of China at the end of the day.
Thank you. Gentleman right there.
Fen Hampson, I co-direct the Global Commission on Internet Governance. In other words, I work for Carl Bilt. And as Carl said, the commission will be delivering its final report at the end of this month. My question is a China-US question. And it has to do with the cyber agreement that was signed last year to curtail or curb cyber espionage, particularly in the industrial sector. How well is it working? I'd be interested in both China's view and the American view. And if it, is this a prelude to deeper cooperation? And for the others on the panel, is this an agreement that should be multilateralized? It's a bilateral agreement and yet the principles or the norms that it's promoting are really ones that every country should adopt.
Thank you. And I would take one more question on this round, Mr. Seito, please.
So more perhaps some comments and questions, but I agree that this internet is definitely a global commons. But what's interesting here that I want to point out, and I'm curious by the panelists, that there are really only two types of organizations now on the planet, ones that have been hacked and ones that just don't know it yet. And through that, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned with, and I'm sorry, so I'm coming here on behalf of the Japanese government. And the concern that I have here is how cyber, and we use this term, and it has rapidly evolved even in the just last few years from becoming a logical threat to a completely physical threat. And that we now have, since 2011, any conflict lords and such have always had a cyber component here. And so it's very concerning that this is not some data erasure, IP theft necessarily, but that I would not be surprised if next year's Shangri-La dialogue, cyber becomes an even more clear and present danger there, that aspect. Because in governments, we have lots of silos and the physical guys tend to be in different ministries from the logical guys. There's that aspect of this. I like the points about how office and defense is really a loose definition by many midcountries. And so this causes a lot of problems at that issue. And then this whole cyber weaponry issue, and I have a bigger point here, a case in point here is the Wasanar Agreement and the ability to be exchanging information that we all talk about, yet the potential of this being treated as a cyber armament and being restricted, this is an area that obviously needs to be addressed and remedied pretty quickly. Another issue, since we have these governments here, that I'm curious is we tend to treat cyber as traditional threats or traditional, as I call them, ABC threats. So ironically, the atomic threat, the biological threat and the chemical threats were actually easier to a certain extent for countries to measure, to audit, to monitor and so on. But this D threat, digital, is definitely difficult because of its lack of sovereignty respects and so on. And really because the biggest issue here is it's just another risk. I don't think there is such thing as cyber risk. It's another risk compounding on the risks, yet governments tend to want to pigeonhole this into a cyber thing when it should be treated differently. And so I'm proud to say that Japan was hosting just last month the G7 presidency and we had brought this up and to see how cybersecurity was brought to a greater prominence than past G7 summits. But, you know, through this, I think that the bigger point here is, and listening to the panelists, the very nature of definitions seem to be very different and what we mean by that. And I'm curious again, and not to pick on China necessarily, but the concept of cyber sovereignty and then it sounds somewhat almost mutually exclusive to the openness concepts that you have. And then to further that, China is now proposing draft legislation in its cybersecurity laws where you have requirements for companies that do business in China that don't sound very open or sound somewhat one-sided. And so I'm curious how that gets reconciled with a China sovereignty, yet from a logical perspective, how it really isn't.
Thank you. I will take another round of comments and questions shortly. For now, before I give floor to panelists to answer the questions in the order of initial appearance, I just remind you of what openings we have on the table. Sovereignty came up several times, so I would ask every panelist to comment on that. Then China-US cyber agreement, is it working? Should it be multilateralized? And then a number of opening from the comment on global commons, cyber physical tech, next, cyber armament, cyber traditional threat. So please pick your favorites.
Thank you. First, on the issue of Singapore's national cybersecurity strategy. Actually, my office is one year old and we are actively working on a national cybersecurity strategy. And if I complete it on time, the plan is for my Prime Minister to launch it in October of this year. The, for those of you who are not familiar, Singapore has a concept of total defense and the aspects of total defense from the physical perspective include civil defense, military defense, economic defense, psychological and social defense. This is a traditional concept of total defense for the Singapore nation. So there are actually discussions on how cyber will fit into this. And some people have mooted the idea that potentially it's a sixth pillar. I personally don't like the idea because the logo that we have for total defense is a hand, it's got five fingers. It'll look a bit deformed if we have a six finger sticking out. But on a serious note, the idea of cyber is that really the sense that we have is that it transcends each of these dimensions. And some people are thinking that it forms a base layer as a sort of an enabler for all of the five aspects that we've discussed. But this is something that's going on. We're not, I'm not totally sure how, what form it'll take, but it's clear that cyber is intimately linked to the whole concept of defense. And from that perspective, not just from military defense, but from the defense of the dependence of the entire nation. How we see cyber is really that it is borderless and we can't defend or deal with the cyber threat or cyber issues within any national borders or, as some of you have said, within a regional border. It needs cooperation. In fact, bad actors deliberately function at the boundaries across the borders and where jurisdictions differ and they exploit these differences in order to take advantage of our national systems. And if we continue to think in these stovepipes, then we are just falling into that trap. So this underscores, in my opinion, the need for us to work together to safeguard and deal with these bad actors. Singapore is intimately aware of this. We are a trading nation, we're an open nation. As I said, we are totally reliant historically on trade and we continue to be reliant on trade and now in the digital world, in the digital realm as well. We cannot survive in isolation and all the more so in this new realm of cyber world. So when we look at the logical threat, as some of you have put it, it transcends borders and it needs us to work together. And this moves on to the last point where we believe that there is a need for a conversation on the norms of behavior in the cyber world. Some of you have brought up the point about US-China agreement. We believe that the conversation should be expanded and other nations should be invited to discuss because this is really about a global commons. Cyberspace is not between one country and another or two countries, it actually involves everyone. And regardless of your level of sophistication, your level of influence in the world, we believe that everyone should participate in this and discuss how best we can manage the challenges that we face in cyberspace. Thank you.
First, on the norms. There is the UN Group of Governmental Experts that had had forums. We participated as a country expert participated in the first three. The fifth one has been formed, we're going to participate in it. So the norms are getting developed and it's not that the US-China came up, it was a contextual kind of a norm in the relationship that they have between the two countries. I would be saying this a little bit, you know, without, I mean, I'm not supposed to probably reveal it, but yet I would, that the fact is that we, between India and US, we have agreed on a more elaborate set of norms, including the one that US and China has. But the problem of developing norms is that first, as a colleague from the US mentioned, it is limited to peacetime norms and the discussions when it gets into the use of force, the threshold, the proportionality, the distinction aspects is somewhat one of avoidance. I mean, by this time, one should be clear that the slow pace of the four groups that have informed the UN and the kind of norms that they have developed and the level that they have achieved is quite unambitious, to say the least. that they have achieved, is quite unambitious, to say the least. And that is because of the larger trust deficit that exists. I mean, there is a sense that the, a narrative of the cyber exists which seems to make people nervous, particularly those who do not sit on the high table of governance. And that is why it is important to build trust. If you were to get norms that are effective, that will work, I think a degree of broader distribution of governance powers is necessary across the world. And that is some, I would find it very difficult to agree that when you talk about the multi-stakeholder model, the democratic norms, you cannot have norms that are democratic on the Internet and the structure being governed by undemocratic means. The other point that comes to mind when you talk about cyber is that the manner in which the cyber grew, which is the, it was a private sector led, particularly even in India, it was, the manner in which it has grown has been entirely decided because the absence of governance in the cyber or the IT world, which has allowed it to expand to the extent that it has. But when you get into these aspects of security, you cannot allow this degree of autonomy that has existed in the digital economic domain. And I am simply uncomfortable with the idea of allowing cyber, big companies and corporations to dictate terms when it comes to cybersecurity. They must come out with constructive solutions, they must participate in the processes, but they can't be developing offensive capabilities, as some people are propagating. I mean, that would be the worst thing to happen after nuclear proliferation. So I, and one more point on this aspect is that, if you look at cyber, a lot of it can be understood through conventional understanding. It's not that different. It is different, definitely. But most of the assumptions that had held in the past will hold in the cyber domain as well. It is only the degree of honesty that you come to the table to talk about it, that will, is probably, or the dishonesty that is inhibiting real results. So if you tell me that I should say that there is no sovereignty in cyberspace, because there is a new anti-sovereign movement in certain parts of the world, and using cyber to voice it on everybody, it is something that needs to be looked at really honestly. As far as India is concerned, on the sovereignty aspect, I think we are very clear. Sovereignty is absolute, whether it is cyberspace or anything else. If you're talking about jurisdiction, it's different. But sovereignty, when it comes to a country's domain, is absolute. How do you, and it is limited by the constitution, as somebody pointed out to me, that there is an arbitrary use of sovereignty. That's not sovereignty. Sovereignty is defined in the constitution of, it has to be exercised through a legal process, by using the authority that has been vested in the sovereign through legal means. So it is, it is something that I would be, I mean, this is a debate that is going on, sovereignty in cyberspace among the international community, I'm sure the UN group will also address it. But I would think that most countries think that today jurisdiction can be exercised on the basis of location of infrastructure, and that has a notion of sovereignty in it. Although I'm quite uncomfortable with the idea of infrastructure location, because increasingly we are finding that infrastructure might be located not in the territorial limits, but in the high seas or in thin air. So you would have to discuss this issue. It is an underdeveloped theme, I would think, internationally. The international frameworks are non-existent virtually. You know, in the case of cybercrime, there's the Budapest Convention, which is amongst the best that you can have as an international framework on any aspect of cyber. So we are at the moment clearly scratching the surface, because there is clearly a lack of honesty in discussions on cyber issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I will use Chinese to answer the questions. First of all, some experts talked about sovereignty issue. The China's understanding is that national sovereignty is right for the state. It is a very important symbol whether you are independent. So we believe that UN Charter is very important to have the, is a very important principle for all of us, which covers all the areas of inter, interactions between countries. So we believe that this principle applies to cyberspace, and we believe it is very important to have the base of cyber sovereignty when we talk about security. And we have to really acknowledge such sovereignty and to respect their model of management, public policy, and also we should all participate in the management of the cyberspace. Talking about all the countries, we have different developmental levels and different capabilities. This is what we see in the cyberspace. However, each country is, is a same, with the same right in the cyberspace. So we believe that we should dialogue and to solve any issues. And some experts talked about information free flow, and I want to remind that carrying and information, it is very important to talk about infrastructure, which is bound, has bound, and China is drafting cybersecurity law, and to, which is very important factor, is to secure the national sovereignty and infrastructure. And how can we secure that and to share that, so that we can provide better services? And we believe that a safe, stable, and prosperous cyberspace is very important to any country or to the global development. In this domain, nobody can, can be independently to develop or exist on its own. And so we believe this is a global space we must share with each other, so we have to manage and supervise together. If we have any issues or challenges, which cannot be solved by ICT technology, we have to face up them together and to, to face the challenges. So we believe that we have to build bilateral transparent system, and the purpose is to benefit the entire mankind. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll try to touch on a few of the questions, starting with Mr. Bild's question about sovereignty and interoperability. I think you have to think about interoperability on three levels, the first being physical connectivity, which all but maybe a couple nations want to be physically connected. The second is technical functionality, and here the example of railway gauges historically is very good. The Russian Empire intentionally used a different rail gauge than parts of Europe. It inhibited free commerce, but it provided some degree of security in slowing armament, shipments, and logistics eastward. Today, I think technical standardization is very broad, and there are commercial solutions even where different rail gauges might be used in cyberspace. So I don't think the impasse is technical functionality anymore. I think it's regulation, and I think there's a number of nations who are seeking to put up the cyber analog of toll booths or customs houses to regulate what goes through, and I think that's where the real issue of sovereignty and interoperability lies, and that's where policymakers and sovereign states to determine what they think the right balance is. Turning to your colleague from the Commission, whose name placard I couldn't see, regarding the US-China agreement from September and its possible broader applicability. I will offer that late last year, a very similar statement was included in the G20 joint statement from the leading politicians. So I think it is gaining wider acceptance as a potential norm. Regarding the US-China agreement and how it's going, I'm not going to speak directly to that, because I think that's more appropriate for sitting US policymakers or sitting US, or sitting Chinese policymakers. I will simply observe that I see much fewer cybersecurity private sector reports alleging the kind of activity that they had alleged Chinese actors were doing historically. And I think it's a matter of intense bilateral negotiations between the two countries. So I leave it to them to explore it, and what you hear from the two governments would probably be your best indicators of how each of them sees it going. Mr. Saito, we've heard the concept of global commons mentioned a couple times. I must respectfully disagree with the applicability of that concept. I think it's a misnomer. Whether you are a political economist like Eleanor Ostrom, the Nobel laureate, who discussed collective action problems and public goods, if you look at cyberspace, it simply does not meet her criteria for what is a commons. If you're an international lawyer, and you're familiar with Mr. Brownlee or Mr. Cassace's work about why the high seas, portion of the law of the sea, or outer space, or Antarctica are commons, those legal criteria are simply not met by cyberspace. Why do I say that? Because every fiber optic cable, copper telephone wire, smart device in any of your pockets, satellite transponder, microwave relay tower, those have all been built by someone who will insist on a property right interest in them and seek a sovereign to defend that property right. So I don't think we're actually discussing a global commons in either the political economy or the international law sense. I think we're discussing something that is a transnational resource, that people have vested interests in, and working on global interoperability is what will matter. I'd also like to bring up a point that Mr. Saito raised about the A B Cs and the D. I think comparing cybersecurity to previous models of arms control explored for other aspects is very useful, both to compare it and to distinguish it. And one observation I'll offer to this group is, cyber is very unique in that the platforms you would use to deliver, for example, a nuclear retaliatory threat, in that case it would be ICBMs, strategic bombers, submarines, historically was completely distinct from the technical platforms you would use for monitoring, signaling, and reconnaissance. In the nuclear analogy, that would have been spy planes, overhead satellites. In cyberspace, I will offer, those two types of platform functions are not bifurcated. And until you're able to do that, you'll be in a security dilemma where anyone trying to prove information will have to risk compromising their own retaliatory assets in order to prove that they were themselves a victim. So that is a fascinating security dilemma compared to previous models. Lastly, I'd like to reference what my co-panelist, Mr. Ja, said about the heretofore modest accomplishments of some of the international groups. I wholeheartedly concur with what he has said, particularly regarding the trust deficit to date, which harkens back to what I said about deterrence not working in cyberspace so far. But I'd also like to add that part of that impasse is based on fundamentally different objectives by some of the sovereign nations coming to those discussions. Some of the Western nations focus on protecting the pipes, critical infrastructure protection. Some other nations, most clearly Russia and China, focus on the content that is transiting through those pipes, the information that I referenced in my opening comments. So if you have even permanent members of the UN Security Council coming to the table with fundamentally different objectives, it probably isn't surprising that the accomplishments to date have been modest, which is again why in my opening remarks, I talked about looking to some aspects akin to Geneva Law to find some of that low-hanging fruit, the common interests that you all absolutely share, and building on those premises, building from the bottom up, because high-security politics haven't worked thus far because of competing interests. Thank you.
Thank you. As I see next round of six questions, I will immediately go to those. First, Mr. Allen, please.
Thanks. Stuart Allen, I used to be a diplomat, and I hesitate to intervene as a rank amateur in this area. But I would be really interested to hear the panel's views on where the balance should lie between the legitimacy, legitimate inviolability of personal and commercial information, and the requirement of states and other actors to ensure the security of whatever it is they wish to ensure the security of. Mr. Ko doesn't have to answer this, but I wonder whether this might not be one of the areas in which he disagreed with himself. And for Mr. Kenok, if you were to try and project classic just war theory into the cyber realm, where would the concepts of proportionality, collateral damage, and the requirement of reasonable success fit into the very interesting scenario you sketched out?
Thank you. Question on the right side, mine.
Thank you. I'm not an expert on internet or cybersecurity, but I'm very confused. The panelists use different concepts. Someone used ICT at the beginning, and then internet, and then cyber, cyberspace, and sometimes used the digital economy. So what's the relations of those different concepts? Which one is the universal? Which one is a galaxy? Which one is a Sodo system? So I'm a bit confused. Maybe in official documents, also different government uses different, there's overlapping or particularly different meanings. Secondly, about sovereignty and cyber, global commerce. The sovereignty means infrastructure is sovereign, located in different countries, different companies. But the information space is global commerce. But even if it's global commerce, who provides the information to, like this morning, the Secretary of Defense, Mr. Carter, mentioned about the security is like oxygen. But who provides oxygen? It's not on the planet, it's somebody, I don't know. If it's the global commerce, but who provides this global commerce for everybody? If provided by somebody, how can you guarantee that a net not abuse this power, like the Snowden case, you know, to show us? Another question about sovereignty and human rights. In the humanitarian intervention theory, told us that human rights is more basically, is more important than sovereignty. According to the human rights, China, we have 700 million netizens, which is the Europeans, Americans, netizens plus together. So according to the principle, the equal human rights. So China should has, you know, the rise is double than European or Americans' rise in the cyber. I don't know whether it's a principle, it's human rights or sovereignty. And lastly, about Mr. Carl Belt, you mentioned about one bell, one road. It's not a one bell or one road, it's not a one world, one dream, the Olympic Games. There are many roads. It's like a Taoism said, that everything starts from one, one brings with two, two brings with three, and three brings with everything. So that's kind of, you should read my book, and the last one I'll show to you later. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I think, five questions still up. Please try to be very precise and concrete and short in your questions now to leave time for panelists to answer. I will just take them in a row, so please start.
Thank you, Rahul Rajchandri, double I, double S. I have two questions for Mr. Ja. The first is that you mentioned in passing the Digital India Program, which is a flagship program of the Indian Prime Minister, seeking to transform India through greater connectivity, et cetera. To what extent do you think the awareness in India of cybersecurity issues is able to keep pace with Digital India and the movement forward on this? And secondly, you've talked about in your comments, you mentioned the lack of honesty on cyber discussions. You also mentioned earlier that the relationship with the United States, particularly on cyber issues, was encouraging. I was wondering if you could sort of, if I could ask you to give us a sense of the countries that India has a useful bilateral cyber dialogue, especially as you've been leading on these dialogues for the Indian government over the last two years or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Question there.
Yes, thank you, Leifery Keasley, Yiwon Women's University and the Asan Institute in Seoul, Korea. I would like to ask about the DPRK. To Ms. Ching, I understand that there is actually some US-China cooperation on dealing with North Korean cyber threats. I'd be very interested if you could enlighten us a little bit on that subject. And for Mr. Ko, I also understand
And for Mr. Ko, I also understand that there are concerns about North Korean citizens building their knowledge and capabilities and also operating from ASEAN countries. And if you could please enlighten us as to what you and your colleagues are doing to monitor and address that cybersecurity issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Invisible nameplate can, but Abdul Mutalib from Prime Minister's Office, Brunei Darussalam. First of all, I think, big hand and congrats to all the panelists, especially, I'd like to conquer very quickly, a couple, one quick comment and one big question maybe. Perhaps I'd like to dedicate that to Sean, Sean Canuck, and the other one to my script, my two-minded friend, David Ko. I was going to say Skid for Fariah, but it's not right. But very quickly, I think we should all recognize the fact that, yes, I do concur that, look, it is indeed a cooperation. There needs to be cooperation unless we can't do it alone to address cyberspace, security, and in the cyber domains particularly. That I concur with David Ko. Then I'd like to tie it up with Mr. Canuck's point on global thinking, and I particularly like that. But if I combine these two, I'd like to walk back again, especially to David Ko. You know, we do have different sets of developments in countries and, you know, as you correctly pointed out, you're just one year instead, setting up your institution with the new agency. And my question is just simple, perhaps Sean and David can answer this. Before we go out there and do cooperation and think globally, can you just a little bit, share a bit on your experience or your thinking on how you actually, you know, align together and put on the same page on policymakers as well as practitioners? And I'm so glad that policymakers are here today as well as practitioners. And I really like Sean's points on industry government initiative that you mentioned earlier on in the 90s in the States, as you mentioned, but perhaps you can elaborate that further. Thank you.
Thank you. I am to impose a 30-second rule on questions, so please continue on the left.
Thank you. I'm Colonel Li Jinghua from the Academy of Military Science, People's Liberation Army. I'm very glad to be here because actually, when I try to find, to choose a session, whether to the maritime dispute or to this one, I think I made the right choice because everyone is speaking in a positive tone. We all, we all believe that cybersecurity or cyber risk or cyber challenge, whatever the term, we all think is a common concern for every country and we all want to cooperate. But where to start? So my two questions is about two cooperative area. The first is about the mechanism. Everyone knows that there is no well-recognized norm in this, in this new, brand-new domain. And there are several different suggestions. And two very noteworthy, one is the multilateral model and the multi-stakeholder model. And multilateral model, which is advocated by China, is always criticized because everyone think China is trying to exercise a governmental control over this domain. But look at the panels today, everyone, all the speakers are from the government. It shows how government, how major role government can play in this area. So I hope that all of the speakers can say something about the multilateral and the difference between multilateral model and the multi-stakeholder model. Another question is very simple and is just go to Mr. Canuck. You said about something about information sharing, and we know that attribution is the most difficult problem in this world, and your country is the most advanced one in attribution technique. So I want to know if there is some new cyber attacks, will you share attribution technique with other countries? And if not, what's the reason? Yes.
Thank you. And now I ask you to ask your question in one sentence because otherwise there won't be any time for panelists to answer, so.
It's hard to ask question in one question, one sentence. I like the Canuck's, Mr. Canuck's comment, I mean, phrase, I mean formulation between pipes and content, okay? The U.S. and the West tend to focus on the pipe, and China and Russia and some other countries focus on the content. It helps us to see the difference, but at the same time, I think the reality is a little more, bit more complicated. China also cares about the pipes. And also, the U.S., to some extent, also cares about the content. For example, child pornography and maybe terrorist information. So I think it's, 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 there is a relativity there. Finally, my question is, you know, another one, that is, you know, in the, like in the real world, in the cyber world, we also have the strong and the weak, okay? In the cyberspace, how can we protect the weak and vulnerable? I mean, the weak and vulnerable, they are in a very difficult place state. They can cause political turmoil if information is flow as free as we desire. Thank you.
Thank you. Final question.
Do I get to do it in half a sentence? Anyway, this takes off from the point a while ago of importance of platforms. And as you may know, the Defense Ministers of ASEAN in their meeting just last May approved establishment of Philippine proposal for a cybersecurity working group. So I was just wondering if I could hear some thoughts on how do you want this platform or see this platform evolving, especially because I'm also a little bit confused because there seems to be a point of, you know, the need to have a clear delineation of responsibilities or rules as far as various agencies and stakeholders are concerned. And yet there is also a sense that cybersecurity underpins everything, so it has to be, you know, cross-cutting, if you could clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. And with this, I will give it to panelists for two-minute rappings on their selected points.
Thank you. I want to go back to one of the first questions, I think, on a balance between personal and commercial information and privacy versus states' responsibility to ensure security. My perspective is that there are, in some respects, almost no absolute rights. Or perhaps, to put it another way, rights come with responsibilities. And these, so how nations deal with challenges like this, I think is a function of their history, the culture, and the circumstances that they operate in. I think this is Singapore's perspective, and even in countries like in Europe, there would be not, to my understanding, absolute rights. For example, in some countries, Holocaust denial, neo-Nazi, Nazi views frowned upon and illegal. In Singapore's context, historically, and the reality today is that we are multicultural, multi-religious society. We don't take this for granted. So consequently, there are strict laws against hate speech, which will stir up religious tensions. So we actively manage this, and this is something which is essential. So from that perspective, security in certain circumstances trumps the need for privacy at whether the personal or commercial entity. This is a function which individual nations would have to decide on, based on, as I said, the unique circumstances in history, culture, and the realities that they live in. Some of you have asked about how I see ASEAN functioning, and I think that, and bearing in mind that there is a need for awareness of the different levels of sophistication, development among the 10 ASEAN member states. Well, firstly, Singapore has begun action. We have co-partnered with the United States Department of State to organize ASEAN confidence building measures last year. And this year again, we'll be working with them on an exercise with ASEAN member states on building awareness. And ultimately, we believe that confidence building measures, confidence and capability building within the ASEAN member states is something that's necessary. How to work together? I think that there are both aspects of multirap, multinationalism, multilateralism, as well as multi-stakeholders which are involved. I look at it that cyber is not a domain that's purely for the nation to deal with. There are other stakeholders, the industry, academia, policymakers, all have a role to play, and we need to have a common understanding, common goals, and then work towards that in a collaborative, positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ja.
Very quickly, the first, the easy question from Rahul, which is the countries that we have cyber dialogues with. We have about 11 countries, if I remember right. It's U.S., UK, France, Germany, EU, Russia, Japan, Republic of Korea, Sweden, and Australia, and Brazil. We are starting one with ASEAN very soon. We are negotiating two agreements, one with Russia and the other with U.S., which is almost final on cooperation in cyber. The one with the U.S. is a unique one because it's probably the more far-reaching one. The dialogue is focused on generating cooperation, which I outlined in my opening remarks. So all of those are the high priorities. Just a very quick 30-second remark on the political differences and the difference in political systems that was mentioned as reason for the lack of trust. But you know, at the same time, systems that are similar, not, no system can be identical, also have problems. This is, the great example is cybercrime cooperation, the difficulty in accessing electronic evidence across countries, and we have very low levels of compliance with U.S. companies on the, so this sovereignty shifting to the companies here. And also, just on the sovereignty question, how you put the question? If you put it on the privacy side, then Europe can have data protection, but it became, becomes, it is also a trade benefit for them. On the one hand, it's a non-tariff barrier for countries like us. But at the same time, it sounds like a very democratic measure, but it's an assertion of sovereignty. So, you know, it's very difficult to understand when people, you know, when they talk about sovereignty, probably they don't mean the sovereignty the way, I mean, they are talking about specific countries, two of them, that generally is referred in that context. The question of just war, I don't think there's an answer to it yet, and that is precisely because I think technological solutions don't exist at the moment. We are talking in the legal, the lethal autonomous weapon systems, also the same problem, and probably we'll have a solution to it in future where distinctions can be made and we can have a framework to address it. Very quickly, on the multilateral versus multi-stakeholder model, I think it is a bit of a useless debate, actually, because, you know, it's, when you are talking in the U.N., it's multilateral naturally. But when you are talking within your country or in the broader global internet governance community, then you have the entire society of yours participating, and it's not just the government. Government just is one of the stakeholders. And that assertion, that realization is one of the reasons why India went ahead and endorsed the multi-stakeholder model of internet governance. Of course, democratic norms, openness of internet interoperability, our preference for these principles was also behind it.
Thank you.
I would like to address in two areas. My opinion, first is internally in China, what we are doing. And we are exploring a road to manage the cyberspace with Chinese characteristics. We believe that freedom is our target, but order is our, our method. If you want to have freedom, you must have order. So we are seriously managing the cyberspace, and we crack on the crimes and to protect our citizens and to protect our young people to develop healthily. And this is our road. And our principle is to rule by, by law, and so that we can balance the order and the freedom. This is the first area. Second area is international cooperation. We believe globally, and those to violate IP and privacy and cyber crimes are the issues that we need to cooperate with every other country. And also terrorism is a disaster for everybody. So the key important factor is we have to face together in a way, of course, against all these cyber crimes. And we would like to set up a convention, international convention, to crack down terrorism and to, in keeping the security of the cyber domain. And at last, I want to say China is open, and this is our strategy and the policy. Since the opening up many years ago, we will not close down, and this applies to our cyber domain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sean?
Starting with Sir Eldon's question about just war theory, you said Bellow, Mucin Bellow. Once again, I would have to revert to effects-based reasoning. So on proportionality and collateral damage, it would be the best effort of an ex-ante analysis of what would be the likely result. I obviously understand that the reasonable success parameter is very difficult with unpredictable technologies, especially when defensive structures are changing every day. To know what impact you will have is very challenging, whether it would be more or less than you intended. So that uncertainty, conjoined with most operations occurring clandestinely, makes all of that analysis incredibly difficult. But I offer, we do have standards of how we do it in other areas and effects-based reasoning. That's what I would strive for, but I realize it would be a tall challenge. Regarding the definitional question, cyber is actually an engineering term from the 1940s and then a fiction literature term from the 1980s. I don't like it. The internet is a limited portion of what we generally talk about as cyberspace. I personally prefer ICT, which is also the terminology used by the U.N. Group of Governmental Experts. So I would offer ICT is probably the most encompassing and the preferred term used internationally. Sir, you also asked who provides the global commons? Again, I don't think it's a global commons, but if you ask who provides that capability, I think it's companies like Facebook, Apple, Google, Cisco, Huawei, ZTE, Alibaba, Alcatel, Deutsche Telekom, NTT, et cetera. The important thing? I've listed a bunch of companies. That should matter to all the sovereign representatives in this room. The question about cooperation, how do we align together? I think you need to find the strategic common ground first. Look at the history of outer space treaties. All those rules, including the 100-kilometer Karman line, the non-militarization of satellites, those rules all came about because during the Cold War, the nations who could put satellites up felt there was a strategic benefit to having satellite overflight to reduce the nuclear threat. Start with the common strategic interest, and you might find common ground for future laws or norms. The reference to 1990s I made was actually to U.S. policy discussions about information warfare, focusing on information content. That leads us quickly to your comment about industry and sovereign, and sovereign governments, which actually is the multi-stakeholder discussion that others have spoken on. My government favors the multi-stakeholder approach. They've articulated that broadly. To Ms. Liu about attribution, I'm no longer in our government, so I will not be involved in any of those decisions about what does and doesn't get shared. That's a policy decision. However, I offer, there is increasingly wonderfully abundant information from private sector companies, whether they're U.S. cybersecurity researchers, whether it's 360 from China, whether it's Kaspersky from Russia. I think we are all benefiting from a very robust global cybersecurity sector, and that is shedding light on a lot of activities that various sovereigns have been doing over time. But I won't comment on what will be shared in the future because I personally have no way of knowing. And finally, to Mr. Ja, absolutely agree with you that both China and the United States care- care about both the pipes and the content. It's a matter of degree, and in the United States, we are either benefit from or limited by, whichever political position you take, our First Amendment. We probably have the least restrictive information controls, but that's in our political history and our constitution, and that's something that each country decides its own balance. But you're absolutely right, everyone looks at both issues, we just find the balance in different places. And I think I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Having a session where questions don't end is a luxury problem, and having a panel that is able to answer all those questions is a privilege. So thank you all for joining this panel, and please join me in thanking the panelists before we adjourn.